To the people from the waiting room, I think.
Yeah.
Public. Excellent. Thank you. Okay, everybody. Good evening and welcome to this virtual meeting of Doris Town Council. Thank you to all those of you who have joined the meeting this evening and also watching live elsewhere. To ensure that this meeting runs as smoothly as possible, all participants have been muted and can only be unmuted when given permission to speak. Those councillors wishing to speak this evening, please click on Participants and you will see the option to raise a virtual hand. The town clerk will then assist me with the order of debate so as we can consider tonight's agenda items. Should there be any disruption to the meeting this evening, the individual will be warned once by myself and if the disruption continues, I would ask the town clerk to remove them from the meeting. And those being removed will not be permitted to re-enter. Okay, so virtual meetings, as this one is being recorded and live streamed and therefore should you not wish for your image to be recorded, please turn your camera off now. Okay, so I'd now like to begin the meeting with number six on the information page on page two of the agenda. As I've just said, recording this meeting, it is being recorded. So public participation, members of the public will be given an opportunity to address councillors present at this meeting this evening regarding agenda items at the discretion of the Chair. Members of the public will also be given an opportunity to discuss town council activities not on the current agenda after the close of the meeting. The comments of members of the public and electors of the parish who speak before the start of the meeting or following the close of the meeting will not form part of the minutes of this meeting. Okay, thank you. So do we have any members of the public wish to speak before the meeting this evening?
Don't believe so, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So now starting page three, then apologies for absence at the meeting this evening.
An apology has been received from councillor Woods and councillor Taylor would like to speak, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been asked to pass on apologies from councillor Mike James.
Okay, thank you councillor Taylor. So could I ask councillors, please, to raise a hand to accept those two apologies?
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. So agreements of the agenda between parts one and two this evening, we do not have a part two this evening, so that's fine. Declarations of interest to declare any discloseable interests relating to meet items of business this evening. Are there any declarations? Okay, thank you councillors. Item number four, dispensations, to receive and consider requests for dispensation this evening.
None received, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Okay, so then minutes to approve, sign and adopt the minutes of the town council meeting which was held on the 3rd of March this year. So I hope you've all had a chance to have a look at it. Any comments from councillors? So could I ask councillors to please raise a hand if you're happy to adopt those minutes, please?
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so moving on to town clerk's reports, to receive any updates from you, please, Andrew.
Thank you, Chairman. Just the one item to inform members that I'm actually acting as the Devon Town and Parish rep on the heart of the South West reopening of beaches and tourism task group, which is feeding indirectly to the Cabinet Office via the Secretary of State for Communities and Local Government in terms of us reopening our communities post Covid or during the easing of the lockdown and the different steps that are involved. They had their meeting yesterday, which was the first one that I attended, putting forward the work that what we see in town and parish councils and how we can perhaps do things better going forward. So I'll provide regular updates on that, but it's good to be at the table representing our sector. So that was just an update on that one. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That's really interesting. Thank you. So moving on to my report, town mayor's announcements. Okay, so it has now been a year since our lives profoundly changed since the first lockdown because of the COVID-19 pandemic. We all know that the coronavirus has affected us all in many ways, bringing pain, grief, loss and a myriad of other difficulties. So a huge thank you to all of our key workers, supermarkets, shops and logistics staff, the NHS, pharmacies and the emergency services, farmers, utility workers, teachers and home schoolers, and to all who have volunteered to help in Doris and to help all in the parish. A huge thank you to all clinicians and volunteers involved with the vaccine rollout. And thank you to everybody who has reached out in their neighbourhoods to help others. So as I write this, three beautiful signets have been born to our black swans here in Doris. The trees are starting to blossom and with the vernal equinox having happened and the clocks changing this weekend, our days will become longer and brighter. So the Doris virtual Easter bonnet parade has now been launched, open to all ages, children, young people and adults. And this is a chance to get creative and the closing date is next Wednesday, the 31st. So this is the spring of hope. Stay safe. Thank you. Okay, so item number eight, the annual parish meeting. So this is because of the pre-election period, Pirda, that's been launched today for Devon County Council and the Police and Crime Commissioner elections. Council is recommended to reschedule the annual parish meeting from the 7th of April to the 26th of April, if holding a meeting, and it must be held before the end of May. Sorry, I need to rephrase that. To reschedule the annual parish meeting from the 7th of April to the 26th of May. Okay, councillors. So councillor Prowse, please go ahead.
Sorry, it takes a bit longer with that arm. I think this is a very sensible move. I always worry about things that go on in Pirda. It's perception all the time. I think the annual parish meeting is very important and I would like to see it after the elections are over. So I'm proposing that we do move this. Do I have a second, please? Thank you, John Pedrick. Councillor Pedrick.
Thank you councillor Prowse. Thank you. And councillor Lowther, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was in fact going to propose it. I'm glad that councillor Prowse has done so. The point I make really, this is strictly speaking, the parish is meeting, isn't it? It's really down to the parish to sort of advise us instead to account for what we've done last year. We've never had it really very well attended. And I wonder if that's just a lack of interest or whether people don't know very much about it. But I wonder if we could advertise a bit more, since we've got a bit more time now. Perhaps we could get the word around town, the purpose of it, and they can come along and ask questions and generally have a go at us about anything they want. With Sunday, with Sundays for the evening.
Thank you councillor Lowther. Thank you for that suggestion. Councillor Moorehood, would you like to go ahead?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, obviously it makes sense. This year, at least we have, lots of people have the opportunity to hear about this through this live meeting. I would just like to hear from the clerk what the process will be as to how we get the information out, because people have to make written requests and written questions. And I'm sure this is going to go out on all kinds of media, internet media. I would like to also be assured that it will at least go out in some paper format, even if it's on the, just the town council, the local town notice boards, please. Could you give us some idea of when the questions will have to be in and how we will advertise this, please, Andrew?
Thank you councillor Moorehood. Can I ask the town clerk to help answer that, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. The annual meeting of the parish has to be held between the 1st of March and the 1st of June each year, and it can be convened by a number of electors. And if the chairman of the parish council or town council is present at the meeting, they are required to chair it. The agenda for that meeting has to be published seven working days in advance, so that would be done by ourselves. And then there will be a date set before that, which I haven't got to hand, but there will be a date set before that for, by which electors of the parish can submit questions to the town council, which we can then provide answers to. It's also an opportunity for the town council to give an update on what it's been up to for the past year, or in this case, the last two years, as we didn't have one last year. And they generally take the form of a very informal, sociable event. Obviously, we're still constrained with COVID-19. We don't know yet if the regulations permitting virtual meetings are going to be extended. It's coming very close to the wire now. So obviously, as things stand, they're set to expire from the 6th of May. So this meeting would be held in person and that will have to comply with any room constraints that are in place at the time in terms of COVID secure guidelines. But myself and officers here are currently working on a theme for the meeting, which we can run by members at some point. So it is in hand, but at the moment, we'll just have to adapt things as the regulations change or not, as the case may be.
Okay, thank you very much, Andrew. Thank you. Councillor Wiggley, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. If I remember correctly, I think this is the meeting that Newton Abbott tend to do in the middle of the town in the open air, which I always think is a nice idea to invite people to. So it might be an opportunity, if we are looking at COVID restrictions for an indoor meeting, to do something entirely different, like maybe have it at the bandstand and do it in the open to actually be more accessible to the residents.
Thank you councillor Wiggley. I like that idea. Thank you. Any other councillors wish to speak? Councillor, councillor Lowther, first of all. Councillor Terry Lowther, did you wish to speak?
No, 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 my hand's still up.
Right, it was, yes. Councillor Mayne, please go ahead.
Yeah, if, if we are going to have this, maybe in the open, or if we're having face-to-face meetings, I put my hand up just now and then took it down because the question I was gonna, or the suggestion I was gonna make wouldn't have worked if we were gonna have it in the council chambers and be limited on numbers. We've got time now to get some information out on the internet or in the Doris Gazette or something like that to say, to ask residents if they have a question they'd like to bring before us. Maybe they could submit it by a certain date so that we can discuss it or reply to the question at the meeting. If it's going to be out in the open, that'll be fine. But if we're in the, it's a bit difficult at the moment. If we're going to be indoors, then we won't be able to have the person come along and ask the question. So we're still up in the air, really, aren't we?
Chairman, if I may, you would still be able to have people come indoors, because obviously the regulations would have been changed to permit council meetings to be held inside. However, you would then have the COVID secure guidelines, just like you would fire regulations. And so whatever the capacity would be at a specific distance is what you would have to put a limit on. And then perhaps we'd have to look at streaming the meeting for others to take place. It does begin to get complicated. And essentially, all 12,000 registered electors of the parish could turn up because they're all entitled to a vote at that meeting. So obviously, that wouldn't happen if it was in the council chamber. But, you know, we work with what we have or where we go.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you. Any other councillors wishing to speak? Please raise your hand. I can't see any hands. Okay, so we've got the proposal, which has been seconded to reschedule the annual parish meeting to the 26th of May. Can I ask all councillors to vote for that, please, to raise your hands?
Thank you very much. That's unanimous.
Excellent. Thank you councillors. Thank you. So now moving on to item number nine, this is the risk management report, which has been circulated as a PDF to you all, to note the risk management reports together with the associated risk register and to approve the action plans. Okay, so councillor Wiggley, I think you were the first to raise your hand. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'd like to thank the clerk for putting together such a large document and feel that it's taken a lot of effort. So I think it's a great, a great start. I'm not sure we had something quite as large as this before. I do worry a little bit that it's difficult to discuss such a large document in a big full council meeting. And I think that what we have here is an excellent step. And I know the auditors later want us to approve this before the end of the month, so if I saw that rightly. But I would like to suggest that we look into this in some more detail in some areas, because there are some things in here that I think are worthy of discussion. A lot of the risk mitigation is about having sort of maintenance plans for this, that and the other in place and other things. And one of the things I have long battled for to get in place in this council is a future maintenance plan, something that actually gives us a forecast for when things are going to need to be done. Some things are quite obvious. We have the annual Legionella inspection and the company sort of writes into us every year to say, please, can we come and do the Legionella inspection? And we rely on them to give us that nudge. But other things may not be quite so obvious, such as when is the lift due for needing consideration for renewal in the building? I don't know. It was put in place a number of years ago and I would rather it was planned than it came up as a surprise. When will the matting that holds the car park together underneath the grass need thinking about renewal? Whole range of things. As we put things in place, we could make future notes for ourselves to say, look at this in five years' time or 10 years' time to check that it's still okay and maybe it needs renewal. And I think that would give us then also the ability to manage the work as it comes through the office in a clever way as well, because we could proactively look at doing things either perhaps earlier than they absolutely necessarily need to be. So we do them in quiet times rather than having them fall in more difficult, more busy periods. But over and above that, there are, within the risk register, a few things that I noticed that perhaps need to be thought about. Within my own area of expertise, for example, there are questions about the risk identified for the computer systems. And I noticed that there wasn't the risk of a virus attack or the risk of a denial of service attack in there as risks to be noted. And there isn't in the data security section, for example, anything about having privacy standards, about informing councillors about when certain documents are confidential and what the audience should be for that sort of thing and how we handle those sorts of areas. That is something that we could usefully add, but I'm not proposing that we add all those things in today. And nor am I going to propose that we ask the clerk to go through this with the other officers to actually determine all of these things. What I would like to propose is that we accept this as it stands today and thank the clerk for the hard work gone into all of this and no doubt all the other officers as well. But also then take each of the sections and assign them to committees and actually review them within our committees on a section by section basis through the year, so that we have an opportunity to look at the risk register, to review it, to identify anything that's in there and actually look at them in a small chunked up way, rather than trying to look at it as an entirety in its whole thing right now. And we can take account of things like the denial of service. For example, there was just last month a vulnerability noted for all email and say in the way we have ours, as a hosted exchange server, that came up. And that's not something that is addressed in our risk register, but it's a real and viable risk that needs to be thought through and mitigation to be in place.
Thank you very much councillor Wiggley. Thank you for that proposal. I'm happy to go along with that, but I shall let Andrew, our town clerk, speak first, please.
Thank you, Chairman. It was just in relation to, I completely agree with councillor Wiggley's latter points, that the committees divvy it up and then look at areas that fall within their sphere of activities. That's absolutely no problem at all. And we can split those reports out easily enough, so that's fine. Just in regard of the maintenance plan, that is actually being drafted as we speak, to coin a phrase, and we'll be going to the May Manor House Committee, Manor House Riverside Committee. So that has been taken on board and one is being produced.
Thank you very much, Andrew. Thank you. So I think councillor Pedrick, I think you were next. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I mean, I've looked through this, it's over 100 pages, and I found it to be really quite comprehensive and thorough. I've got a couple of questions, because I've, my background is health and safety, actually, and I can see that councillor Lowther will probably not very shortly, because he and I both hold the same qualification in health and safety, which is the NEBOS general certificate. We've chatted about this in the past. As I say, I think it's quite comprehensive, but I accept that possibly to have a look at it in finer detail is not a bad thing. I have a question, actually, on page 31, which is the minimise the risk of damage injury arising from the use of perhaps hazardous substances. I just wonder what hazardous substances we actually use, because I assume that the photocopier is contract managed and the toner is changed by the contractor. So what hazardous substance is that we likely to encounter?
Chairman, if I may, no, the printer would be changed by ourselves. The printer knows when it's about to run out of ink. It knows when the toner waste cartridge is about to be full and it then alerts us to it. So we then change those tubes and recycle the old ones and send them back. It also relates to things that the caretaker may undertake in his duties of cleaning the premises and also particularly because of COVID and the fogging machine we have to sanitize rooms. Obviously, there's an associated risk with that. So it covers all those types of things as well.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew. Thank you.
Thank you. I think councillor Mary Lowther was next with hands raised. Please go ahead.
Councillor Lowther, you should have a message asking you to unmute on the screen.
Thank you.
There we go. Yeah.
Yes, thank you. And yes, I have looked through the document and there is just one question and it is on sheet 28. Employment law. And the last part of that is advice taken from Mid Devon District Council's Human Resources Department is taken before any, and it finishes. And I don't know what is after the any.
Thank you councillor Lowther.
I think the clerk is looking.
I am, Chairman. Yes, I don't know why it's pulled through Mid Devon, so that that needs to be deleted and replaced with South West councils, because that's who the council gets its HR advice from. So I can make that amendment.
Yes, but I'm still saying the sentence finishes in midair.
Oh, yes, it's cut it off, isn't it?
Before take, before any. So I mean, it's most probably not terribly important, but I just did notice.
I can find out for you councillor Lowther and come back to you on that one. I don't know why it's cut it off. It must be a page formatting issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Andrew. Thank you. Councillor Terry Lowther, please go ahead.
Yes, that's my agreeing with everything that councillors Wiggley and Pedrick have said, but I do. And I'm glad that the clerk is in agreement and is actually doing something about it now. I only wanted to want to take one point, and it's really about lift, since councillor Wiggley mentioned it. And of course, a lot of the people who are listening to this actually use the lift. And I might not be doing it now, but, you know, enormous construction teams do. And I'd like to reassure everybody that in fact, there is a legal liability for having the lift checked every six months. And the people have a contract to do that. They would come in and disconnect the thing if we didn't have it certified every six months. So I just thought, I always put that in, not to be niggling, but to reassure people that the lift is already checked anyway. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Lowther. Thank you. And finally councillor Prowse, please go ahead.
Andrew, I suspect that the South West that we're talking about is the lone working policy that we have yet to hear from, or we hadn't when we last discussed it, from South West councils.
I don't believe this particular point relates to that, because it's all around contracts of employment. That would come under a separate heading, but not in relation to that particular point that councillor Mary Lowther raised.
Oh, okay. I took it to be including that. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you councillor Prowse. Councillor Wiggley, please go ahead again.
Thank you very much. I was just checking, because I made a proposal that we accept the report today as it is and approve it and then take it to the committees. And I was hoping for a second, unless you had seconded it yourself.
Thank you councillor Wiggley. Thank you. And I have accepted it myself and I'd like to second that, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we've got a proposal seconded by myself. So can I ask a show of hands, all of those in paper, please? Please raise a hand.
Thank you, Chairman. That's unanimous.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so turning over, item number 10, this is the interim internal audit report, pages 123, 132, to receive and note the internal auditor's interim report. So you will have all seen that forwarded with our agenda papers. Thank you very much, Andrew, for circulating this. It's very interesting. Any councillors wishing to speak? Councillor Pedrick, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, it is an excellent report. And I think our staff should be congratulated for performing at such high standards. I see in the overall conclusion that there is a deadline by the 31st of March. Is that going to pose an issue at all? Or are we going to reach that sort of deadline without any problems?
Chairman, you've just approved, well, you've just reviewed and approved the risk register for this financial year, which is essentially what this is saying. And then obviously, going forward, as each committee examines each relevant area, you'll build up to a Uh and then obviously going forward, as each committee examines each relevant area, you'll build up to a a crescendo, if you like, at the end of the next financial year, when you'll be in a position to approve the the next, the following year's register with hopefully no problems.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you. Um any other questions from councillors? Councillor Ridley, please go ahead.
Um I'd just like to uh um agree and and thank thank the office for performing so well and the uh getting another um uh clean audit. And I propose we um accept it and say thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So um yeah, I can see a couple of hands raised. So can I ask all those in favor, please, of receiving and noting and saying thank you for this internal auditor's interim report? Please raise a hand.
Thank you very much. That's unanimous.
Excellent. Thank you. So moving on then to item number eleven, the district of Teenbridge Offstreet Parking Place Order twenty twenty one. So this is to consider the proposed um offstreet parking places order and to make representations, if there are any, to Teenbridge District Councilor, district Teenbridge District Council, sorry. Um so you will have seen, you will have seen the documents that have been circulated. Councillor Peddic, please go ahead.
Oh, thank you, madam mayor. Uh yes, I'm a member of the car parking review group at Teenbridge and we have regular meetings. And it's um it's quite interesting because if you look at the finer details of some of these pages that we have, and there's a lot of information there. But you'll notice that there are a number of car parks that are only seasonal and residents can park for nothing during the winter months. Uh Star Cross is one. Morton Hampstead is another one. Um uh and there are some car parks not too far from where we're all sitting now perhaps, where nobody pays anything whatsoever. They're all free. Um now, we need to be considering sort of the maintenance of these car parks. If we're not getting an income from them, we still have to maintain them. But to make sure that the surface is fit for purpose and the lighting wherever. So I I I it's something that that we are looking at. We've highlighted all these car parks. And if you look at the report, you'll see them. But we've decided that not to recommend to full council this year that we actually start charging people for winter use. We're going to wait until next year because a lot of people are experiencing sort of financial hardship at the moment. It would be unfair to levy them with an additional cost. Another point is we we also at our review group, we discussed motorhome parking. Uh motorhomes are not allowed to stay overnight in our car parks, but nevertheless, people do. I'm a regular user of the Polysteps car park in Timmouth. And it's not unusual to see ten ten motorhomes. They're occupying more than ten spaces because of the size of them. And that's something also that we are looking at. And I I hope that uh uh we will be able to provide parking for motorhomes in the not too distant future. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Peddic. Thank you. Um councillor Ridley, you're next with your hands up. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much, madam mayor. Um I just wanted to check with clerk whether he felt I should be declaring an interest as a member of Teenbridge Executive, which is basically putting this through and asking our opinion on this.
Um potentially, chairman. Obviously, it's not going to be pecuniary. Um so it would be an appendix B interest and, you know, being in a position of, I think it's management or control. Uh it may well fall within that, but obviously it's councillor Wrigley's um decision.
So I I I will declare an interest and abstain from voting, but I would like to uh reserve the right to speak, if I may.
Thank you, councillor Ridley. Thank you. So councillor, so Lather, please, I think you're next.
Yes, thank you very much, madam mayor. Um yes, interesting to hear what councillor Peddic was saying about uh car park maintenance and costs and and all that. Of course, I understand that. But I I would ask him to take into account in the review committee your effects on tourism, off putting up uh trying to park and charges. You know, we're we're just looking at tourism and the future of tourism in Daulish. Appreciating that it's a very important part of our economy, if I say, it's the biggest part of our economy. And to introduce charges that don't already exist, particularly during the winter, when we do in fact get quite a lot of of people coming into the town and spending in shops. In fact, I I don't know, maybe councillor Maine could comment on that, but maybe the the cafes and things do better during the the winter than during the summer. Um possibly for um, you know, just get out of the weather. And that very much applies to motorhomes. I know there are um objections to motorhomes. I have a very strong feeling on both sides on that issue of motorhomes. But they they do in fact bring a lot of money into the economy in in coastal towns particularly. And during the winter, of course, a lot of them are still running about. Um they don't stop, you know, and all this and so on. They're all, the majority are retired, so they don't have kids to look after and all that sort of stuff. So they travel about during the during the winter and they are always looking for somewhere to park. They have a magazine which um circulates widely in the motorhome in business. It lists the the towns which allow parking and promote towns that allow parking. And while, you know, I do appreciate that you want maintenance considerations, do please take into account the the effect of cutting off a valuable source of income from people like the motor owners, but people in general during the winter. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lather. Thank you. Um councillor Gary Taylor, I think you're next, please.
Uh thank you, madam mayor. Uh yes, I should declare a similar interest to councillor Wrigley uh being a member of the executive of Teenbridge. Uh I would like to take part in the debate, but I won't be voting. Um and I'd like to make, I'd like to echo councillor Terry Lather's um uh comments about about motorhomes. I think they are, it's a growing sector. Uh I think we should do all we can to attract them, but whether we want to whether we want to attract them to our car parks or indeed to our very good uh um sites that we already have here uh in especially in especially in Daulish is 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 another matter. At at one point, I I I felt in more inclined that we should be making some charges, in in other words, regular regularizing, regular, yes, anyway. Uh making a charge so that people could stay in a car park overnight in a in a in a uh motor caravan. Um having heard more details on that particular argument, and particularly with regard to um the cassettes that they have on board for foul waste um and the other needs of the motorhomes, I think the the costs involved uh are perhaps more substantial than 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 you might at first imagine. So from so from my point of view, I think that's a debate that's going to keep keep running, but we are fortunate in Daulish in having such such good holiday parks with accommodation for motorhomes and long may they continue to come here.
Thank you very much, councillor Taylor. So I think it's councillor Lisa Main next, please.
Oh, yes, um this year it didn't happen, but other years there's been pre-parking on the Sunday at the Warren and Daulish or all Teenbridge car parks. And you can see a vast increase in the amount of people that just come out and about walking. And I think that's that's fantastic. Going back to the motorhome problems, I think maybe six years ago, uh they trialed something, Teenbridge trialed something for to allow people to stay overnight. Unfortunately, it gets abused, not by everybody, but by some people. And they they'll come and park in the car park for a week rather than go and pay to stay in a holiday camp. As as been said, we've got some fantastic holiday camps. In a normal times when we're not in lockdown, you can come and stay there. And during the winter season, the charges aren't very much. But what's when I was in Teenbridge, um it took eighteen months, almost two years to remove somebody that had put a caravan in the car park at the Warren. And how can we stop someone living in a car, a a motorhome, sorry, not caravan, a motorhome in the car, in the Warren permanently when we're allowing them to stay overnight? I don't think it's a road we should be going down. I know on the continent it's very, very um the thing to do. And I know there's there's magazines where you can find out where you can park. I know Timmouth's had a problem with the same ones camping there. And I know Exman's got a problem. And I don't think we should even consider it. And it might be, you know, it might be controversial, but I don't think we could because if somebody, if we get one caravan at one motorhome park and then next week we've got two and the week after we've got four, before long, we're going to have any car parking. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Main. Thank you. Um I think councillor Ridley was next, please.
Uh thank you, madam mayor. Um yeah, there are a couple of sort of requests, I think, that we've made in the past, but I think it would be nice for this council to put forward again. The first one is the important one, which is the asking for thirty minutes free on the upper section of the Barton Car Park immediately outside of the um uh hospital and the GP surgery there. Uh that's something that has long been requested by this council and by residents. I think that is something that we we should put forward once again. Um and then the other one, which might sort of work a little bit against the first one, but but it it's still something that comes up frequently, which is transferability of tickets. So if you pay for all day parking in a car park, you should be able to move from one car park to another and actually keep that same ticket. We're going to have a lot of people uh coming down this summer. We're going to have a lot of tourists. Um if if nobody is allowed to go abroad, uh we're going to have a huge number of people coming down to the South West. And it'll be interesting to see how it goes. But I think transferability of tickets is an important one to help tourism. It's a relatively straightforward one. Uh but I would like to see if this council can ask Teenbridge or keep the pressure on Teenbridge to consider that transferability of tickets as well as that thirty minutes free parking designation within the um within the meters on the on the, just on the upper section of Barton Car Park, not the whole car park, just the upper section. And if anybody says they can't do it, well, they do it in Strand Car Park, so they can do it elsewhere as well. So it is it is achievable.
Thank you very much, councillor Ridley. And I would like to second both of your proposals. The first one about thirty minutes free in the in the hospital and the doctor's car park. I think that is excellent idea. And I think it's something that we have been calling for quite a few years. But I really like the idea about the transfer transferability of the car park tickets because this year in particular, I know that there will be a lot more visitors. We hope there will be a lot more visitors coming down to Daulish. And so it will really encourage people to to visit the whole area. And I think it's brilliant. So I'd like to to second your proposal. Uh we've got a couple more people wishing to speak. First of all, um please councillor Morehead, I think you're next.
Thank you, madam mayor. Uh yes, mine's a little bit of an odd one. As I understand it at the moment, up until now anyway, it's possible to purchase an all day ticket on a Saturday here in Daulish, certainly in the Barton Car Park. And because it's free on a Sunday at this time of year, you've got uh basically the whole weekend. Now, I noticed the East Cliff Car Park, there's now a one pound charge, token charge for the Sunday, which means you're going to have to get up early on a Sunday just to go and put another ticket, a one pound ticket on your your car. Why? Why not just add a little bit for a whole weekend ticket? That seems to me really a bit pedantic. I don't know. It just doesn't make sense to me. Sorry.
Thank you, councillor Morehead. Thank you. That's that's really interesting. Thank you. Um councillor Terry Lather, I think you were next, I think.
Okay, thank you. Um another, just just a very quick one on motorhomes. Yes, you're right, councillor Main. I'm absolutely right that um motorhomes all over France and Germany and Italy and places. Um and they don't have a problem. And the reason they don't have a problem is they provide facilities. So the sort of problems that you you found at Daulish Warren were caused not by the majority, obviously. It's always the minority that do these stupid things. But they took rubbish because they they said there was no bins available. And of course, the the cassettes that uh councillor Taylor referred to, I do hope they didn't empty any of those um really nearly around the down the Warren. If they did, that's appalling. But in in France and, you know, most European countries, they supply facilities for that sort of thing. Some fresh water, somewhere to dump rubbish, adequate place but but solid rubbish. Um and it works very well there. Um and I I think we ought to look at it. It's 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 easy to get um a bit heads up about incidents that go wrong. I'd like to have a look at it. It works elsewhere. Why can't we make it work here? Um the other one very quickly was, oh yes, while we're bending councillor Pedrick's ear, can we have some more disabled parking fees in Barton Hill Car Park? I mean, there's just two places near the doctors, two places near the hospital, and that's it. And it's, you know, it's not 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 acceptable, really, the big car park. We also have a few more. Thank you. And that's the end of my speech for this evening. Well.
Uh thank you very much, councillor Lather. Thank you. Councillor Pals, I think you're next, please.
Uh thank you. Um I have absolutely no problem with councillor Wrigley's proposal that we ask about the car park outside the the surgery. Um I wouldn't like to count the number of years that I've been uh doing just this. Um and the number of times that Teenbridge have come back and said, no, um councillor, he's not with us at the moment, but councillor Martin Heath also, before he was a councillor, wrote to it. One of the things was that to keep thirty minutes outside the surgery, it has to be manned. Now, it's easy at the moment because you're only allowed into the surgery five minutes before your appointment. But when appointments get very busy and people get behind, you could well be there for longer than thirty minutes. It needs to be manned. I I'm just paying devil's advocate here because I it would be nice to be able to to park there for thirty minutes for free. Where the doctors were asked if they would like to take that car park on because they pay or used to pay to have for the right to park there. They've all got their names and they have to pay for that. They said that they were not prepared to take it on because that makes them not only liable for the person who would have to man it, but it also makes them liable for the maintenance. And they weren't prepared to do that. Um it's it's such a very, very long uh a long and difficult thing. And I am given to understand, councillor Wrigley, that there are no other car parks outside that Teenbridge own outside doctor surgeries which have that facility. And we were told there was no reason for Daulish to be any different to any other car park owned by Teenbridge outside of surgery across right across the district. So by all means, ask. Um it'll just go on and many years of asking. And one day we might possibly get it, but we need there's quite a lot of answers before we could possibly get that for nothing.
Thank you very much, councillor Pals. Thank you. And councillor Tavon, please go ahead.
Thank you, chair. Uh yes, the Barton Hill Car Park, um we talked about Strand having thirty minutes. Um and the thing is, it's not just the doctors that people park their car for. They go into the chemist to collect prescriptions. They 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 take in their prescription and then collect it. It it doesn't take thirty minutes. Now, if you go down the strand, you can go into Boots and you get thirty minutes and you don't have to pay pay there to get your prescription. So this is discrimination, basically. You've also got the HUD there. So they're having glasses, they go in and they have to go back to pick them up, not thirty minutes. So it's just not the doctor's surgery. I know I feel quite strongly about it um because I use it virtually weekly and have to pay seventy p for a ten fifteen minute appointment. And I think Mr. Lather probably does the same, uh even though we've got disabled badges. Um and they do need more disabled um places in in the car park. So I'd just like to make that point. And over the years, I also have been writing to Teenbridge about this matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Tavon. So we've got quite a few um proposals, suggestions. Um we've still got two councillors who wish to speak again. Um I think it was councillor Um, we've still got two councillors who wish to speak again. Um, I think it was councillor Morehead first.
Councillor John Pedrick, chairman.
Right, okay. I can't see the order. Um, councillor Pedrick, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, madam mayor. Yes, I, I've listened with great interest actually. And, uh, the, the three comments that have been suggested that we should do something about them, I will take these to the next car parking review meeting and I'll feed back with you and give you an indication of what the mood might be. But thank you for your comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Pedrick. And finally councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
Thank you, um, madam mayor. Regarding the half an hour free parking up at the, what I refer to as the health hub, I was, uh, one of those who wrote to, uh, various people at Tinbridge as well about this. And I was told by an officer or, and or a councillor, I think, this was a while ago now, it couldn't be done because if they put half an hour free there, it had to apply to the entire car park. Well, I have a very, very simple solution. You rename the top part, the health hub car park. That solves the whole thing. And as far as half hour free parking goes, it may have changed because it's a while since I've been there. But in Chadley, the main car park there by the library, they, they have a half hour car, uh, parking fee on there. I'm sure councillor Pedrick knows whether that's still in, in, in place, but for goodness sake, it's so easy. Rename that part of the car park. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Morehead. Thank you. So I think all councillors wish to speak have spoken.
Chairman councillor Heath indicating he wishes to speak.
Right, I didn't see your digital hand councillor Heath. Please go ahead.
Right, thank you. Sorry I was late, but we had some big problems and there's still got a few on the internet, but I think we're okay now. Um, yeah, I heard you talking about the subject and councillor Prowse mentioning my name. Um, fortunately not in vain, which is good. And basically, I think it's been said, we did try this many moons ago. I can't remember how long ago, loads of moons ago. And, uh, you're right, they all said you can't, can't do it for this, that and the other reason. But I think, uh, it's an excuse. And I think, um, the previous speaker councillor Almore, who's just come up with a fantastic suggestion, which I think has been tried, but they just ignore it. And at least if they won't do the whole car park, could we not suggest the section when you go in the first turning and you turn right, it's right in front of the chemist and the doctor's surgery. If just that section, what might have a, need another signpost, it's true. So it would be at more expense. Um, says health visiting car park. Uh, and then obviously the terms of half an hour or whatever for free. Um, then I think it would help. The only problem being is it's been said in the past. Well, how do we know who's cheating or not if they don't go to the doctor's surgery? Um, and of course it does mean that the surgery, I agree, would have to get involved because you have to go in there like you do. Some hospitals and hospice, they give you a card while you're in there and you put it on your front windscreen showing that you're visiting on special reasons, which I've even used. And then, you know, you give it back before you, you go. Um, so like, there is complications. I don't think the doctor's surgery wants to be involved in that admin side of it. But even without that, I still think we could do it if they would do, uh, just that section. And yes, there will be some cheating. So I think that just comes with the course, power to the course. That's all I wanted to add to it, a bit of background.
Thank you councillor Heath. Right, so councillor Wrigley, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, madam mayor. I was just saying I was happy to, uh, I'm not sure if it came up as a, as an amendment, but I'm happy to take on board the additional, uh, disabled parking bays in the original proposal, if that helps.
Thank you councillor Wrigley. Was that the car parking spaces on the stand? Was that?
Uh, no, it was, it was the additional disabled bays up by the hospital.
Right, okay.
Doctor's surgery and hospital.
Yeah. And chairman, can I just seek clarification? Councillor Heath has just mentioned the potential of suggesting the car park outside of the health hub be thirty minutes. Is councillor Wrigley building that into his proposal? Or are you wishing, looking to keep it as the whole?
I think the whole thing outside of the, it, it's much cleaner to have that whole section uh, outside the doctors and the hospital as thirty minutes. That way it's, it's very obvious to just draw a white line on the road. There's no, no installation. You rename the car park as the, the upper car park or the health car park or something and draw a white line. And then it's very clear that that only applies to that area of it.
Right, okay. Thank you councillor Wrigley. Right, quickly then councillor Dawson, please go ahead.
Um, it was just one little note about the great motorhome debate really, um, which was just to say that I would rather not, um, explore action for this year, certainly as our holiday parks in the town are trying to recover after a disastrous year. So I would not want to be sending the message that we're looking to provide amenities and things like that when really we should be uh, channeling anyone who comes down into our local businesses right now.
Thank you councillor Dawson. And finally councillor Terry Louden, please go ahead.
Just coming to the, on the parking issue, I think we have a misunderstanding. Um, when I was talking about disabled bays in the, uh, Barton Hill car park, I didn't mean the, I'm saying that the, the are already bays near the doctor's surgery and near the hospital. We could do with a couple down in the, the main car park at the lower levels, what I meant.
Right, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, and councillor Morehead, did you have something else to say?
Thank you, madam mayor. I would like councillor Pedrick to, um, give me some idea about, the actual method of payment, uh, is mainly by card. But at one time it was changed so that people using the, what I will call the health hub car park, were able to use coinage. Now, are they still going to be able to do that? In which case there will be somebody visiting there to empty machines and check on parking time anyway. And my other point would be, if that changes so that people using that area have to use a card, I would point out that it's nigh on impossible to extract your card from these machines, especially if you've got arthritic hands and the majority of people using that area of the car park do have problems with disability and age. So I think it's really important that if possible, that remains as a coinage option. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Morehead. Thank you. Um, so we've got a few, um, recommendations and, um, representations to make to Tinbridge district council. So could I just check that these are the correct, um, proposals? Um, first of all from councillor More, uh councillor Wrigley, sorry. Um, the thirty minutes free at the Barton Hill car park, hospital car park and the doctor's surgery car park and to rename it the health hub car park. Is that correct? Okay. The second one, transferability of tickets in the parish for car parks. And then the third one, the extra disabled car parking spaces. Two more in the lower Barton Hill car park. Is that correct? So could I ask councillors if they would like to vote on those proposals, please? All those in favour, please raise a hand. Thank you. Councillor Wrigley, you go to vote.
Councillor Wrigley's declared an interest, chairman, as has councillor Taylor.
Right, okay, okay. Sorry, all those in favour of voting then, please.
That's unanimous, chairman.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so that's good. Um, councillor Pedrick, did you still wish to speak?
Thank you, madam mayor. Yes, in answer to councillor Morehead's, uh, concern about the machine at the Barton car park, the, the hospital car park, um, not taking coins. Like, I mean, I have checked this and my understanding is now that it does take coins. Um, but just to let you know that, I mean, I have done some work on this. So I've worked with the portfolio holder councillor Jeffries um, over a year ago. And of course, unfortunately Covid kicked in. But before then, we had a meeting with the practice manager at the doctor's surgery. And we were looking to allocating passes to people that were visiting the doctors. If they had a good reason to visit the doctors, then they'd be entitled to a pass. So they go into the surgery, pick up a pass and put it on their windscreen so they wouldn't have to pay. Uh, but that hasn't moved forward because of Covid unfortunately, but that's something that we were looking at. And I hope that that's something that we could perhaps introduce later this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Pedrick. So we will make that as a recommendation. Um, councillor Tavon, did you wish to say something?
Yeah, it, it is coins. And going back, what, eighteen months, two years, all of a sudden, um, it came that you had to use your card. And a lot of the elderly don't have cards or didn't have it and they were actually being fined for it. And so I think some of the district councillors, I think councillor Wrigley worked on this with Tinbridge and councillor Pedrick and actually got it changed. Um, then it went back to cards again, then it was changed again. It's now money and I think the elderly are so pleased with that because a lot of them can't use the machines or, or they're disabled or whatever. So it's definitely coins and let's hope it stays as coins. I was told when I spoke to Tinbridge that it was about, that there was two spades of breaking into the, into the pop, into the um, say, and therefore that's why they, they use cards. But they've been servicing it with, with, with someone collecting the money. And I understand there's been no break-ins. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Tavon. So can we, um, can we vote on that proposal? Sorry.
Sorry, ca, sorry chairman, councillor Heath's indicating noise to speak.
Right, so can I carry on with my proposal or, or reiterating councillor Tavon's proposal first?
Yeah, up to, up to you chairman.
Okay, thank you. So as councillor, um, Tavon has, has just, um, suggested, a brilliant suggestion that we, that we recommend that those, um, car park machines, um, are for coin purpose as well as for cards. All those in favour of that, please? Please raise a hand. Excellent, thank you. Okay, councillor Heath, please go ahead.
It was, it was just basically to make sure that, um, we don't confuse when we do write our letter. Um, because when basically Tinbridge, I think I'm right in saying this, perhaps I might be corrected. Um, talk about the car park, from as far as they're concerned, there's not an upper or a lower, it's the Barton car park. I can see people nodding, so I've got that right. So if we're talking about, um, having free car parking upstairs as it were, outside the hospital etcetera, just make sure when we word it, that we're talking about the upper car park. Otherwise, if we are asking for the whole car park, which I didn't think we were voting on, am I correct? We didn't vote on the whole car park, did we? Just the upper bit, right? So when they see that, if they think it's the whole car park, they will go into some sort of fit. So just to make sure we make it clear, uh, that it is the upper car park we're talking about and not the Barton car park. Because the Barton car park is both. I hope that helps.
Thank you councillor Heath, thank you. And I think that's why we, um, make the additional recommendation to rename the top one, the health hub car park to, to make it.
At the moment it isn't.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you councillor Heath. So thank you councillors. Are there any other suggestions, representations, recommendations that you wish to me, make? So I'm getting my words mixed up. Any other comments or anything? Okay, thank you very much councillors. So I think that concludes our agenda for this evening's meeting. So thank you very much all, everybody for attending. Thank you to, um, the editor of Daulish Gazette for attending this evening. And thank you councillors, keep well, keep enjoying the spring and, um, enjoy, have a very happy Easter when it arrives in a week and a half's time. Thank you. Take care.
Take care.
Bye.
I don't know if you're still there, Nick.